I would like to record.
Thank you, Mr. Gant. While we are conducting town business using remote participation via Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion of the moment, please mute your microphone to avoid interruptions outside the conversation.
Thank you. Marshall, it doesn't look like there are any minutes today?
No, we're going to have a big chunk of them coming up in a future meeting, like three or four, but none today.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next item is 2021 Town Meeting Logistics, and I see that our moderator has joined us today, and Beth is here as well. Kevin, I'll turn this over to you to kind of bring us up to date on the arrangements.
Excellent, thank you, ma'am chair. Got a great team that's been working behind the scenes to try to pull together the town meeting this year, and we've got our moderator, Mr. Whalen, Police Chief Hubby, and our town clerk, Beth Willis, with us tonight to help walk through where we are with those logistics and then answer any questions that the board might have. The hope is that after today's work session meeting, if there is any last questions or concerns, that we can hopefully get answers for you in short order, and we'd like to be able to sort of push that information out sooner than later if we're in agreement with the steps that we're looking at taking around town meeting. So I know we've talked about this in a number of meetings previously, but like I said, wanted to pull the whole team in today to provide an update, a detailed update, and then, like I said, answer any questions. So I'll turn this over to either Chief or Beth, or I don't know, Steve, if you had anything you wanted to say either, welcome.
Neil, Chief Hubby has been acting his point on this, so why don't he explain what we're going to do this year? And I'll add if I have to, or Beth can add if she has to. Is Chief Hubby here?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay.
I'm going to try to share my screen so I have a schematic of the tent and the seating, so it might be easier for all of us to follow, so let me try to share my screen with everyone.
Neil, give me one second, I'll give you the privilege to do that.
Well, he's getting that ready. I can just give you the particulars. We're trying to do this on May 8th, Saturday, May 8th, beginning at 10 o'clock and going to whenever, but it will be right on the Commons underneath the tent in the open air.
I think everyone's really going to enjoy being on the Common this year.
Yeah, the optic looks good. I mean, we have it. It goes back to the old historic town meetings right there at the meeting house, but it does look good, and I think we're pretty well set. But are you ready, Chief?
I'm sorry, Steve.
Go ahead.
Almost everybody I've talked to, when I tell them it's probably going to be under a tent on the Common, they're excited about it, and they smile, and they seem to be happy about it.
Good, good.
Now, I will also tell you that it was pointed out a week or 10 days ago about the fact that the Boy Scouts usually use that very same day to do their shrub and plant sale on the Common. They've been informed of the fact that town meeting is going to be on the Common that day, so they have agreed, I believe they've got it arranged, to move across the street and do their flower and shrub sale on the lawn in front of the church.
Oh.
So there might be some other things going on the way it sounds.
Hopefully, they'll have a good crowd to help support their cause.
It might help their business, yeah.
For sure.
And it worked out too, they're not doing the traditional sale. That would have been unwieldy to try to operate that as well as the flowers, so it was a good thing they weren't doing that component.
You mean the junk sale?
Well, one man's junk is another man's trash.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd also note, and it's going to wait till the end, but while we get set up, there's, you know, the rental, the tent, and some of the other costs associated with having town meeting this year. We anticipate to use funds that have been available to us through grants related to COVID, as we are being forced to be outdoors due to the pandemic, and we do have some different buckets that we'll be able to pull from to cover the costs, so.
That's great.
Neil, are you comfortable with the traffic situation?
Yes, I am.
So why don't you explain that, Chief? And we can go through all of the handicap accessibility, traffic, and everything, so go ahead.
Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to share the screen so we have a better understanding of everything, so.
And too, Chief, that was sent to us, so we have seen it, so if it's not able to be pulled up, we are familiar.
Okay, so.
How about one of us sharing it, would that help?
It was just how you done it all in color and stuff, so I don't know.
That's more important.
I'm not sure why I can't share it, so.
Somebody else have a copy of that one? Steve, somebody can share it?
I do not have a copy of it, Dick, but I'm sure.
Ours are in black and white.
Debbie, you got the chief set up to share?
Yeah, she does.
Okay.
Well, Chief, working on that, I just had one other thing too. Just want to acknowledge the Topsail Garden Club, Martha Morrison and her crew. One of the elements we'll talk about as we talk about the formal logistics is wanting to beautify the Common as best we can for the events as well. It's kind of our opportunity to really show off for maybe an extended period of time, multiple hours, with what the downtown looks like. So the garden clubs, we, using some of our shared street and places funds that we received last fall, we purchased 20 planters, ground planters, not the ones for the lights, but ones that go on the ground, and we're going to probably pull maybe about half of those out. The garden club's going to help us by filling them with some beautiful flowers for the event, and we'll put them strategically around the perimeter and maybe up near the stage as well to add just a little bit of a more elements to the event. So it's something else that we're excited for, and I just want to publicly say thank you to the garden club for their willingness to support that.
Yeah, we were hopeful that maybe we would have the flowers up on the solar lights, but it's a little early in the season.
There we go, there we, well, lost it.
Is it up there, Mr. Gant?
Nope, you had it, you had it.
You had it, yeah.
Hey, you hit the, you wanted to maximize it, you hit the close button.
Now we got it again.
There we are.
Not quite maximize, but maybe it's not worth maximizing it.
Yeah, I wouldn't maximize, but I would pull it up.
Oh, you got it.
There you got it.
All the way.
I never said I was good at technology.
You were, you got it.
Okay, so what I want to explain is that we're going to be using the north side of the Common, so everything from the flagpole heading north to the Commons Event Center. So there will be still open space if the Boy Scouts wanted to use the gazebo area. That area will not be affected. So the front of the, just to give everybody a clear understanding, the front of the tent, we're going to refer to as on North Common Street. At the edge of the tent, there'll be 30 feet between the edge of the tent and the pavement of North Common Street. We're going to create 12 parking spots for the Select Board members, FinCom, the town moderator, the town administrator, the clerk, and the legal representative from KP Law. So they'll all park in designated parking spots on North Common Street. All the staff that Beth has will be parking on East Common Street on the roadway, along the paved area, and all of the department heads who park along Main Street. So there'll be designated area, and the reasoning for that is we don't want the attendees to disrupt the meeting and be leaving and moving their cars. So we know the, all the Select Board members, the FinCom, the staff and the department head who stay for the duration, so there'll be less disruption of cars moving in and people movement from that perspective. So it doesn't matter from a left or right perspective. We're going to have each of the Select Board members will have their own chair and own table underneath the tent. They'll also have a microphone. The moderator, legal, and clerk will be in the center. There'll be an eight-foot by eight-foot elevated stage there for the moderator, so he'll be off the ground, a little higher up, and then FinCom will be on the opposite side of the Select Board members. This is all just recommendations. This is, it's your meeting, the moderator's meeting, and he can set it up any way he wants. We are concerned that for some people may not feel comfortable underneath the tent. When you look at the seating there, in a row across, it designates, you'll see a double seat, a single seat, and a single seat, starting from the outside perimeter coming in. So we're getting 13 seats across in each row, and then it will go back for X number of rows, and we can get the 312 people underneath the tent in properly spaced seating. Even though the governor has changed their social distances to three feet, these are all six-foot circles for everybody to have a, from a perspective of what each circle represents. On the outside of the tent area, which is the inner rectangle, we have 25 feet of space on each side before we get to the tree line, so we can fit, again, four more seats, two singles and a double, on each side, which will give us an additional seating capacity. And I only drew four rows, so again, we're taking a look at 32 seats that we will set out prior to the meeting, and if people think we need to go greater than that, we can build out from there. But again, every seat we put down, we have to pick up at the end of the day. So that's the parking area for the department heads, the staff, the FinCom moderator, clerk, legal, town administrator, and Select Board members. The points of ingress and egress will be about two-thirds of the way down the tent. As you see, we're going to get an ADA compliant entrance that will come in from East Common Street. We're going to have nine designated handicap spots, five in front and five behind, so there'll be minimal to no walking for any handicap person. They'll get out of their cars, the ADA compliant entrance will go right to the street, so again, wheelchair accessible, and anybody with canes or walkers will be safe. They'll come in there, and then we have nine designated handicap seats for those people. If you think we need more than that, actually, there's 12 seats because the outside is always a double seat. So if we think we need more than 12 handicap seats, and this is only based upon last year, I had 13 handicap parking spots designated last year, and we only used three of them. So again, I still think we have adequate with nine handicap parking spots and 12 handicap designated seating area, and that is all in the bluish area with the HB. The purple area is the ADA entrance. That will also be entrances and ingress and egress for all people. I've talked to Beth, we're going to have two check-in stations on the East Common side and two check-in stations on the Main Street side. So everybody will, point of entry and ingress and egress will be opposite each other, and everybody will come in about two-thirds of the way, and then whatever direction or whatever area they want to sit in will be, is based upon their comfort level, whether they want to be in back of the tent, front of the tent, or outside the tented area. For the non-residents and the guests, we have a bullpen area, which is going to be, again, if you're looking from the moderator out, it'll be the bottom left-hand corner. Again, we're going to have eight designated spots. I viewed that last year, and I don't think there was anybody, there might have been one or two people lauding around in that area, but I wanted to not take away some valuable seats for those people, so we have a designated bullpen area for them. When you look at the outside seating and then you look at the outside, the most, the outer perimeter there, you'll see a word that says "snow fence." That is realistically the tree line. There's six trees on each side. They're almost equally spread out in space, and we're going to put snow fencing there for security purposes so people, we can control point of ingress and egress of people entering and exiting there. So there'll be snow fencing from tree to tree to have proper security from there. We don't want any disruption of the moderator and all the FinCom and Select Board members, so that's why we've moved down the point of ingress, about two-thirds of the way down, so there'll be very little disruption for the meeting. From the electricity perspective, I've already talked to the Commons Event Center. There's 10 electrical outlets, or five electrical outlets with 10 plugs on the exterior of their building. They have no events at that venue, and they're more than happy to allow us to use their electricity so we can power up all the microphones and the sound system based upon the outlets from the close proximity of the Commons 1854 building. For the parking, you'll see the designated parking, you'll see the listing down the bottom. At the Emerson Center, there are 60 legal designated spots. On East Common Street, I went and measured it, and again, we have 335 feet of space on each side of the road, looking at 12 to 15 feet of spacing between the cars. We can fit between the both sides of the East Common, 56 cars there. On Main Street, we can fit 60 cars. Town Hall, there's 50 designated parking spots, and Proctor School, there's another 50 legal parking spots. So that's not allowing parking on the High Street Extension area, but again, or on West Common Street, which people are more than happy to park in those areas. So with the legal parking spots that I mentioned, we have 276 parking spots. Our bathroom facilities, Steve has talked to the Emerson Center. They're more than happy to allow us to use their bathroom facilities. I also priced out porta-potties. It's $224 for a porta-party for the weekend. It's actually a monthly rate. They don't do daily rates or weekend rates. And $284 for a handicap accessible porta-party. If you wanted something more accessible and closer to the venue and not making that long distance to the, not that it's long, but making the walk over to the Emerson Center. So that's another additional cost if somebody wanted to talk about that. So that's pretty much how it is going to look. From the flagpole to the, to North Common Street, there's about 221 feet. So again, there's still, we're using relatively small footprint. It does widen out 133 feet across, which allows us to have seats on the outside, but still within the secured area. The fire department will be supplying the medical tent at the rear near the flagpole, or Topsail Police Department will be providing the security. And when we look at what we're going to do for street closures, we're actually going to shut down East Common Street, North Street, and Main Street, and we're going to notify all of the residents on the hollat that they're going to have to go out through the Perkins Row Way or out through Route 1, that they will not be able to come down and enter North Common Street or East Common Street because all those areas are going to be blocked off. So we will notify all those residents by flyer, robocall, also by social media. We're going to put up the electronic signboard, letting everybody know a week in advance of the meeting that of the detours that they will be facing from the specific hours on May 8th. And we'll do all the proper notifications to all the residents in the immediate area so there are no surprises to anyone. So just to recap and everything, the tent is 80 feet wide, 160 feet long. The back of the tent will begin at the flagpole. The front of the tent will be about 30 feet before the pavement of North Common Street. The seating under the tent will be 312 seats, 32-plus seats on the outside for people that don't, that maybe feel claustrophobic or fearful of not a safe environment. So we're going to make accommodations for those people. We will have a security fence line all around with snow fencing. We talked about the handicap accessible ADA compliant entrance with 12 designated handicap seats. We talked about the bullpen with the eight designated seats in the left rear corner, looking from the front out. We talked about the two points of ingress and egress, two check-in tables at each point of entry. We'll follow all social distancing guidelines. They'll be followed by fencing barricades and also stanchions that we'll set up. So we'll have a serpentine line, so everybody feels safe and six feet away on each of those points of ingress and egress. And the handicap people will be directed to the East Common side and everybody else. And the reason why we did this is because there's an even number of parking spots on the East Common side as well as the Main Street side on on-street parking and using the Emerson lot as well as using Town Hall and Proctor School. So we tried to balance it, and so no matter where you park, you're going to have pretty much an equal distance of walking to the venue. We talked about the bathrooms, electricity, the number of parking spots, the street closures, the notifications, the medical and the security. So I'm not sure, you know, again, this is all subject to change. This is something that we met on the Commons, Steve, Beth, Kevin, and myself. We met with the tent company. We got two new schematics for them. And if you're looking at where the seating is, you see two little Xs about eight rows down. We'll put microphones there for anybody for public comments or questions. We need more, we can add more, but we're finalizing the details with the sound company to come in. So not sure if I, hopefully I've answered most of your questions, but I'm sure there's a lot that I did not capture, and more than happy to, with Beth and Steve and Kevin, to entertain any questions, concerns, comments, or adjustments. Thank you.
Before we get to questions, just let me add, I think Neil and Beth, working together, have thought just about everything. They did an excellent job in planning this whole thing. I think, Neil, we talked a little bit about putting a hard-packed material where if you had to roll in or had a handicapped chair that you had to get in, is that still on the table or is that going to be?
Yes, that's that purple area.
Okay.
Okay, so that purple area, that's going to be the ADA compliant entrance. That's going to go from the street all the way to the aisle, and we can expand that to under the seats. It just becomes a cost.
So the only reason I mention this is it makes it much easier for anybody with a handicap and disabled to just wheel right in. It's a really composite material similar to what you see in gyms or exercise rooms, and it won't be, the ground and the grass won't be a problem.
This all looks really very good and thorough to me, so I have only one minor thing that might be of consideration, and you brought it up at the very, very end about the microphones. I would think we might want one microphone outside those aisles for somebody who is maybe sitting outside and doesn't want to come in and go in, you know, up the aisle. So if you had one outside the tent, that would make it easier for somebody who might be sitting outside the tent to not have to come in, so to speak, to speak.
That's a good point. We could put, again, depending on the number of microphones that were allowed, we can put one on each side on the outside periphery.
I mean, other than that, this looks far more thorough than I ever would have been able to manage.
Yeah, Chief, this is a great job. Just a question for you about the tent. There was some talk about if for some reason the weather was just horrific on the 8th, moving it to the 15th. Could you just speak to that?
So one thing, the tent company was extremely flexible. Again, you know, we understand the cost of this, but again, we're also dealing with, you know, very difficult, still challenging times to make, to pull this off and make sure everybody feels safe. So what the tent company has done is that if we, for any reason, decide that we have such inclement weather that we want to move this, they will leave the tent up through the next weekend and allow us at no additional cost for the chairs or for the tent. We worked out that deal with them, that they will leave it up to the 15th at no additional cost. So we have a lot of flexibility with this company.
Now, while we're talking about that, I just want to throw this out to the Select Board. We're thinking if it's overcast and it's light precipitation, then we're going to still hold this. And it's not, it's not, it's not like we're only going to hold it on a sunny day because I think it is important that we understand that this is an important event, and we should schedule it and pull it off the same day we schedule it. So the only reason we would cancel, and obviously, I'm saying this because I want to make sure that you're in agreement, the board is in agreement. The only reason we would cancel is if it's a driving wind, rainy, and all of that stuff. It's almost like a New Easter coming through.
That makes sense. You have a lot of space in the middle there that people could escape a light drizzle or, you know, a light rain that they wouldn't be wet other than just getting to and from their cars, which would happen even if they were going to an indoor facility, that have to travel to their car and back.
Yeah, and that's another good point to bring out. There are no walls. Sometimes you see walls on the outsides of these tents. We do not have walls on this tent, and the airflow is going to be pretty good.
I would just make a comment about the fact that it seems to me pretty thoroughly thought out. I don't have any, I don't have any suggestions that I could make to make it any better, but I would ask Neil, trying to set this thing up and get it all organized is a huge job, in my opinion. How are you set up for manpower to get all that done, Chief?
So it's going to be very similar to last year. You know, we had a lot of cooperation, Gary Wildes and myself, and a couple of his staff members. You know, we set up the 220 seats. The town administrator came down and was setting up seats, Beth and a few of her people. You know, I mean, so again, and we also made it into a family event. I brought my wife and my daughter the next day. They drove golf carts. They got to meet everybody, and whether it's on the golf cart or the point of ingress. So, you know, we, people look forward to this. I've talked to Gary. He has no reservations whatsoever. I think the nice thing is they're going to, and I think a benefit of this is that they're going to set the tent up around Wednesday. So we're not going to be scrambling on Friday night and Saturday morning at 5:00. When Gary and I met last year at 5:00 in the morning, too, in the dark almost, to be setting this up, we can have this all set up and take our time a couple hours on Wednesday, a couple hours on Thursday, and a couple hours on Friday. So this is much more manageable than last year. The chairs we can set up beforehand because they're not going to get rained upon or whatever, so we're not worried about people sitting in wet seats. We also know people last year brought their own seats, so we know there's going to be some movement and some adjustments, but again, it's their event. We'll work with them.
Chief, do you have some folks, or are you envisioning some kind of wandering or placed throughout here so either to help direct people with the parking or if people are not aware of the ingress, you know, and they're attempting to just walk into the middle and grab a seat? Are there some folks around to help guide people?
As last year, Beth had a staff, I had a staff, and we had a bunch of volunteers. So again, last year was more challenging. We actually guided people to where the waters were, to where the annual report was. We almost escorted them to their seats to make sure that nothing was really moved around. So I'm not, I don't anticipate any problems with guiding people with the law enforcement personnel that I'm going to have there, best staff, and also the volunteers.
Okay, yeah, because last year it was a little more obvious that people had to walk through the fence at Masco to get onto the football field. So it was a funnel, where here, if there's no walls on the tent, it's just a very large tent with 300 seats. I was just envisioning if people didn't realize to go down to that entrance, and then we're just wandering into a seat. There's no funnel here. There, there's no funnel here per se because people could wander in.
I know that, I know the snow fencing is, is not pretty, uh, and it does, does take away. Uh, but again, people would have to climb over the uh, snow fencing. So we are building uh borders. Uh, it's a temporary fencing and not permanent like at Masco. So it does force a person to uh, actually go down to the point of ingress or egress.
Oh, okay. So is that all the way around? I see one up near the, okay.
Yeah, so the snow fencing will start at uh, at the top right-hand corner, go all the way down to the end of the tent and across.
Oh, okay. Excellent. I, I didn't realize that. Thank you.
We will border the whole perimeter with snow fencing uh, to actually have a added level of security.
Okay, great.
And the only opening, I think, will be at your ingress point.
Exactly.
Great. Any other questions?
With your cursor, could you give us an indication of where the serpentine waiting line is?
So on he- here, that when you come across Main Street, we're going to have serpentines coming down here in this area. And then since, and then over here, that within this area right in here, the, the serpentine will be going down here and the roadway is out here.
Somebody will come in through the gate and that, and that's, and outside. We come in through the gate and turn left to enter the serpentine wait line.
So they'll come?
No, the.
What was that, Beth?
No, no, I think I, um, to me it seem, I think we're going to have the line outside of the fencing. So right where it's in orange and it says um, degress and ingress. That's outside of the snow fencing and that's where the line will be to come through the checkout to get, to get inside the snow fencing, to be in, in the perimeter and then down.
The, the snow fencing is going to be here. There'll be an opening right in here. And the, and the serpentine will be in this area, up in this area, the same over here.
Outside the snow fence. Thank you.
Yes.
I assume that we're going to be hiring audio people to do this?
Yes, I already have um, the same company that did it last year booked again.
Thank you.
They did a good job too.
Amazing last year. I could not believe how good that audio was. Thank you, Beth.
Yeah, yeah, that sound was unbelievable. I, I agree. It was um spectacular.
And it's, it's crucial to have that and, you know, when you're outside especially, on the inside you, you have control of the noise around you or whatever else. It's, it was very well done and thank you for getting this taken care of. Thank you. Well, well planned out.
Looks good to me.
Great. Terrific. Um, if there are no more questions, just a, a huge thank you to Chief Hovey, to Beth, to Steve and, and any others that were involved in this effort. It's um, really well done and I think it's, it's going to be a lot of fun. I, I just want to make one comment just to uh, um, to back up what Neil had said before about, you know, we're going to make every effort to get this done on the eighth. And then once it is done, uh, if it happens on the eighth, then the tent will come down. If there is something um, that whether is that inclement that we do have to push it off to the fifteenth, then the tent would stay up until the fifteenth. So that is the way we have structured it with the tent company. Right. Thank you. All right.
Did I, did I hear Neil make a comment about the fact that uh, the tent company is providing the chairs?
Well, we, we are getting the chairs from the tent company, but it's um, they're not providing them for free. There's a cost to that.
Oh, okay.
It's basically the same cost as we paid last year for the, for the chairs.
They're gonna, they're gonna handle them all for you.
Right. Yeah, we're going to do them with, with this company, um, with the tent company to keep everything simple, the same vendor. Um, and we're getting four hundred chairs. I've gotten four hundred chairs. I don't know if this is the third or the fourth year that we've had to get chairs because we got them for a couple of years over here at, at Proctor as well. So I think this is the fourth year we'll be ordering chairs for town meeting. It's just been a thing. Great. Steve, any closing comments on your part?
Well, I, I typically, just speaking of chairs, typically what the company will do is they'll drop off the chairs. But like we did last year, Neil and Beth and I were setting up chairs the day before the, the, the town meeting and uh, that's probably similar to what we'll be doing. But we'll check, we're definitely going to check the long-range weather forecast and make sure that everything's a go. And I'm just crossing my fingers thinking that the eighth of May will be a nice spring day for, and it will be, you know, to see this occur on the town commons, the history, the optics, everything is going to be a great event.
It will be. Um, I don't know, Kevin, um, do you want Steve to speak to the moderator forum as long as he's here?
Yeah, I thought if, 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 just wanted to touch base with, with you all and I, I had a great conversation with uh, Mr. Whalen earlier today. Um, and I just wanted to maybe provide you with a, an update on some of the thoughts.
Kevin, before you go on, could I ask, Chief, do you mind if you could um, pull down the screen share?
Uh, that might be more difficult.
Okay, go ahead, Kevin. Thank you.
Yeah, so um, in, in the vein of transparency and, and, and allowing the, in opera.
I know, he's working on it. We can still talk.
Uh, in, in allowing for um, the community to, to be engaged prior to the meeting. Um, Mr. Whalen and I spoke earlier today and, and we, we were tentatively looking at a date to, to, to have that event again. And I'll, I, and I'll see if you wanted to maybe add a little color to the, what the event looks like.
Sure, sure. Well, we typically did and we've done this in the past. I know uh, Kevin uh, did a little bit differently uh, last year, given the, the COVID restrictions and but what we'll do is we'll make sure that the warrant is published online, that people can access the warrant and ask questions about any of the warrant articles, including budget items. And uh, we'll do this on an invitation Zoom. And uh, basically uh, it's worked in the past. What has happened is that people uh, can have, ask their questions if they're concerned and it, and it helps alleviate any uh, long uh disruptions that we may, that may occur on town meeting day. So, and it also gives people a little bit of a heads-up preparation when they, before they come to the town meeting. So this is going to be a Zoom session advertised and uh, and whether it will be well-attended or not, I mean, the, the good news about this year is we've, we've pretty much pared down things to as uh, little as possible and uh, we're not uh, overspending on anything and then there aren't really any, I would consider too controversial issues and stuff like that. So this, this way of allowing citizens to uh, preview the warrant articles and ask questions about it seems like a um, a good thing to do.
Steve, we had a, a couple of large meetings. One was uh, for the PFAS and the other one was for the old highway garage where we had about a hundred people come in. Depending, we don't really know how many might be coming to your forum, but are you having it open for people to speak? Or are they emailing questions to you as you go through?
I think it, I think they'll be allowed to speak. We, we can control it in the sense of if they, you know, just go like this, that they have something to say uh, or ask a question because it makes a little bit, it, it, it makes it more uh, interactive, so we say.
Yeah, it's a little tougher when a lot of people come in because then you're flipping screens because you can't see everybody at one time. So as the moderator, it's a little tougher for you because you have to keep going between the screens to see if there are any hands up. Um, but if everybody fits on one screen, it's easy. It just gets a little tougher, we found, when you had to keep paging to see if anybody.
Right, right. Yeah, when you have your galley view, you only can do so many per, per individual screen. But I'll uh, we'll, we'll work that out so that we have someone looking there and kind of rolling through the screens and alerting me to who has a question.
Great.
Uh, one other thing that we've done in these big meetings is you uh, provide a, an email address. So some people may want to email uh, questions. Uh, and so if there's somebody monitoring that email, that could work too.
Right. Yep, good, good point. Any other questions, comments? And, and I really do appreciate Chief Hovey and Beth. They've really done a great job in the last two years of uh, considering how we run town meeting. And I just want to shout out and hands up to them.
In another life, they both could be master event planners.
There you go.
Well, in my opinion, in my opinion, last year's town meeting went pretty well. And that was kind of the first shot that we'd tried to do and you did a great job there. I expect this one to be um, uh, every bit as good or better and potted flowers around the snow fences and all that stuff. It's going to be pretty cool.
Very quaint.
All right, thank, thank you all. I'm going to leave.
Okay, so our next item is the um, school resource officer intermunicipal agreement. Kevin, um, if I can turn that over to you to just quickly summarize our background and then what um, what we need to give you as feedback on this. I think there might be just a couple of questions, but.
Yeah, absolutely. So um, on two twenty-four, twenty-one, um, after I received feedback on the last version following our work session where we discussed the S R long, long agreement. And there was a short-term agreement that was put in place that was agreed to back in November and then a long-term version that they're looking to have that in their version runs to two thousand and forty um, from a, from a term standpoint. Um, received that input on that long-term version, um, sent that along to the other town administrators on the twenty-fourth of, of February. Um, was resent to them again a week later on the third of March. And then on the twenty-second, earlier this week, we received um, from Middleton um, an updated version which their board has apparently voted. Um, it incorporated edits from Jeffrey Sands on the version that you have, who was the assistant superintendent at Mascanomic. It did not include the edits that were pa- provided uh, last month to them from, from you folks. So um, I wanted to, this just came in, we had the work session. I didn't want to delay at least getting this to you for your review and potential discussion today. Um, and any feedback or, or directive you'd like me to send back to um, the school district and the other towns um, be more than willing. Um, if it's editing this new version that they've provided with some of the changes previously made and sending that back, that's fine. But again, my understanding, the Middleton has voted the version that's um, the most recent version in the right-hand quarter dated three, eight, two thousand and twenty-one um, through the Middleton, uh Middleton um, select board.
Kevin, do you know why they didn't um, vote on any of our changes or did they not even look at them or?
Yeah, how did, how did we get here again? What you're saying is they put it out for request for info and we sent some stuff back. To who do we send it back? I thought we kind of, we're going to talk with the other towns, but perhaps we just send it back to Mascanomic? What, what actually happened there? It's not clear to me.
So I sent an email following our meeting, I think twenty-fourth was, whatever it was after that Thursday work session to the town administrators with a note saying this was reviewed by our select board and these edits are attached. It was then I received an email from one of the two town administrators saying, "Do you have any feedback, Kevin?" And so I re-forwarded the email that I gave, said, sent to them the week prior. And at that point, they confirmed receipt. And then, they were then silent for almost three weeks until Monday when they submitted back the version that you have now, which did not incorporate our changes. I did reach out.
That was Masco, that was Masco that put that back, right? You, you went to town administrators, but Masco then put something out. So go ahead.
So Middleton sent this, so Middleton requested the second time for the, we resent our version. It was resent to them. I am not privy to what they did between the time I sent it and when they submitted it. I did reach out to uh, the town administrator to find out specifics of what they did between time I submitted it into what they submitted back to us, if they reviewed ours, if they didn't. Why the assistant superintendent now provided updated language.
Kevin, who's actually coordinating this? It doesn't sound like there's a central point that's taking input from the three towns, consolidating it and then feeding it back out to the towns.
Like trying to hurt a bunch of chickens.
Is it Masco serving in that capacity?
Masco actually told us at one point, let the towns figure it out. That's why I was actually surprised that Masco sent one with some revisions in it between the times. Right, I know. So um, it seems like there's multiple people doing multiple things at the same time. My understanding, I had a conversation before with Alan and Andy before we, we had our last conversation on this in, in February, where I said, "Send me what you have, the last version, the long version." And making sure I have the, from a version control because nothing's typically dated. And I said, "Send me what you have and I'll take it to the board. That's what you folks reviewed. That's what we edited." And then at that point, it was the, what we decided, what discussed was I would send mine back to you folks or back to them, to their, to the town administrators for their review and to them, to bring it to their select boards. Again, I never saw the version from, with the updates from Mr. Sands until I received it back from Middleton. Um, so at any rate, I wanted to make sure that you had a chance to look at this. I unfortunately didn't get that call back in time before this meeting to be able to provide definition of what happened between me, when I submitted it back to them and the version they submitted back to us. Soon as I have more information, I'll let you know, but I, I didn't want to delay in getting this out to you, at least and an update on what's been going on.
So clearly we're, we're not voting to approve anything today because we don't even know, we have versions floating out there and.
We don't, we don't know what the deal is yet.
And it would appear as though all of the contribution we made has been inadvertently or otherwise tossed aside.
From us to say that it's up to the towns, I don't think is realistic because this is an agreement between Mascanomic and the three towns, which implies all four parties need to get together on this. And this is going to be a lot of extra work. We've already seen it now three times. Middleton's already voted on it. We're not happy with this. We still have some changes. So um, I think Masco has to pull together the three towns and reach agreement on this.
It, it looks like after they made that indication that, so I think when they submitted us, when they provided the first version that we were working off of, I don't want to sound too cavalier, but it was sort of, "Okay, guys, here, here's the document. Have your select boards look at it." It appears subsequently from that, they went back and looked at it a second time for some reason that I'm unaware of and made additional edits to it. Which might be why, because we were working off the other version, why Middleton might have not incorporated our changes because they had received an updated version which I hadn't seen. So the short of it is, is if we wanted, this is the latest version with Middleton's edits. So it incorporates Masco's and Middleton's. We, we've not heard from Boxford for some time. If we wanted to take this version, incorporate some of the changes that were in the last version into the new version, I can then submit that back to the town administrators and say Middleton's given their input, Mascanomic's given their updates and now uh, Topsoil's done the same and we'll just be waiting for Boxford at that point.
Assuming that the edits made by Masco and Middleton don't conflict with the edits made by us, I would hope that, yeah, you could take what we contributed, work it into this document and, and then we have one document that seems to represent everyone who has wanted to be represented because Boxford apparently doesn't care. So.
I think at least in one area, we do have a disagreement because they still have in here that the agreement grows through twenty forty, which we were uncomfortable with. It was too long a period of time.
Well, we don't need to discuss. I, I, I can't imagine voting for an agreement that long to do anything, any part of my life. Unless you're signing me to a guaranteed contract, I'm not signing one for fifteen years.
Yeah, so that, I, I think we could incorporate our changes and Kevin, you go back and say, we've got to get it kind of our act together here, but here are our changes based upon your latest document. So I think the twenty forty is definitely one. I have a couple. Does anyone else have some comments before I share mine?
I mean, we have all the things we have in there, including select board. Uh, it was just an obvious one that it's, it seemed to me, did anything, that's just a given. You got to put it in. So somebody didn't see our edits is the way I see it or didn't, they didn't see, couldn't have seen our edits because that, that, that's non-controversial. It's just a fact.
So let's identify anything that we want to add to this current agreement and Kevin can go back. And I think Dick, to your point, yes, the name of our board is incorrect. It should be select board. That's one.
Would you want me to take the last version edits and incorporate the best I can and then recirculate it? Or do you want to send me a clean one?
I think that would be a good start.
Yeah, I do have one question.
Time on it now, but I, I think if we had those and you did that, I think it would be helpful to us. And then why don't you throw a version on the name of the file?
We're getting good at that.
See if we can encourage, see if we can encourage other ones to go along with it. I know it's, it's, it's more difficult because there's, there's different parties involved here. So it's a little bit. It's more difficult because there's, there's different parties involved here. So it's a little bit more difficult.
We, we, we better put a version number on it because this, this is getting pretty unwieldy.
Kevin, I do have a question, um, beyond probably the wording, but in the last part where it talks about costs, our last comment was they refer to the district a lot of times. And actually at the beginning of the document, the word is school district. So if, if that is referring to the school committee, then it should be referred to as school district in that last paragraph, not the district. But my question is, do they really mean the school committee in here or do they mean the superintendent?
Well, at least one place they made that change, right?
Well, they made it up at the beginning, which raised the question for me, Marshall, because they're saying they're acting through the superintendent. So now that last paragraph is confusing because do they really mean it going through the school district, which is the school committee? Or do they mean it should be sent to the superintendent? So it's more of a question of substance, not just that they're calling it the district. Do you know what I'm saying? Was that clear?
So the town shall provide the superintendent with an estimate.
And that, that's my question. Is it the superintendent or do they mean the school committee? Because the district referred to the school committee. So I don't know who gets that information and who makes that call. But it should be clarified in here. It's either school district, which means school committee, or they changed it to superintendent. And it's.
Does the district mean the school committee now or does it mean the school committee and the superintendent?
Well, up in the first paragraph, um, it says acting through the school committee herein school district.
So in the end there, yes, but I mean, if you go to the very beginning, I think.
I, that's what I'm talking about. In the very beginning, Dick, in the first paragraph, it says the school committee herein school district. So it's in the first.
I, I think Dick's question is, does the here and after refer to the combination of the superintendent and school committee?
Well, then the first paragraph would have to change because that's not what it's saying. It's saying specifically between the Mascanomic School District acting through its school committee herein school district. So the school committee is specifically called school district and towns of Boxford, Middleton and Topsfield. So it's, it's unclear. They just have to clarify.
It's unclear.
Okay. So I, I will incorporate the ver- last version from you folks into this as best I can before I circulate it with the town administrators.
No, no, and then give it back to, then give it back to us so we see it.
Yes. So before I send it to them, I'll send it to you folks. Make sure you're good with it.
Monday's meeting and we can, we can discuss it then, right? I mean, it's two, three day, four days from now, right? Can we do that? No, no. Will go, comes to us next before you bother other people.
And we, we should get the answer to that question about who they're referring to with school committee or.
I mean, everyone else is operating willy nilly. We can make them wait another couple of days.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to be urgent.
That's right.
Well, we're covering the school district with the short term one. So we do have a little bit of time. Yes.
They, they don't seem to put a lot of, um, um, importance to this item. So I'm with you, Marshall.
Yeah, nor thought to us because they're just ignoring what, what we've got to say thus far.
Okay. Um, why don't we move on to the next one? The town warrant for twenty twenty-one. Um, so if I could just say before we dive into it, we've made excellent progress. From what I can see, there were only five articles that have some changes from the last meeting that we have to go through to make sure we're comfortable with them. There are a couple of typo changes with the word, you know, consent agenda one, consent agenda two, but only five articles that have any edits in them. So if we could go through those five articles, see if we can reach consensus on the wording and then have a vote on articles one through fortieth for approval, because we have not officially voted to approve the articles. Does that sound okay? We will walk through until we come to the ones with changes, but it seems like there are only five.
So we are, uh, just for clarity's sake, version five point oh two underscore three twenty-three, twenty twenty-one.
Right.
Yep, yep.
Okay. So, um, just walking from the beginning, one of the little edits was just in the very first, uh, paragraph there in said Topsfield. The I in the word in was removed from being a capital and taken down to being a small letter because it's actually a continuation in the sentence. That's all that did. Look, okay?
Yep. Yes. Yep, yep.
And the next one was article third. Kevin, if you want to speak to that, that was the removal. Um, no, actually I don't think there was anything in article third. What's that?
I don't think.
Needs numbers.
Just numbers.
Needs numbers.
Okay. So it's article fifth, then that was a change.
Article five.
Yeah.
So in article five, um, we, we removed the language at the end that talked about, um, any free cash being applied to help balance this portion of the budget. That was removed based on conversations, um, that we've had with the FinCom. Um, and what I, what we have now is raise and assess. I do want to mention that I deleted appropriate. What I'd like to do is add that back in. So it will read raise and assess and appropriate the sum of, and then the number. So, um, in addition to that, raise and assess is one little additional tweak I'll be making.
Right.
But it doesn't need to be two ands. It can be raise comma assess and appropriate.
That's right.
Yeah. Raise, assess and appropriate. Always one and.
Okay, just.
Raise comma assess.
So it does say traditional language we've used in the past that's just been carried over. For example, article six to be consistent. It says in, in the recommendation, uh, and raise and assess and appropriate the sum of.
We should be consistent.
Uh, that, that, we should take the and out of that one then, out of that recommendation, out of six. Raise, assess and appropriate.
Is that different than what we've done in the past?
The standard wording is, is Boyd indicated is raise comma assess and appropriate when it's only one form of, uh, funding. And, and the funding is raising assess versus transfer.
All right. So we'll just have to make sure if we're going to that, that we're consistent in every one of the articles.
I, I think we're probably pretty clean. We, we do have to check it, but, uh, we don't have many raise and assesses after the budget and these, uh, these items.
But we have. It looks like most of them are.
Right. Most of them transfer cash.
So let me, so it'll read through three, uh, thirty-eight million, three hundred and two thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and raise comma s and appropriate. So take out that and between raise and, and assess.
That's it. That's it.
And then the same thing in six, um, if we have it there. Yeah.
I guess we won't be debating the use of Oxford commas here right now.
Let's not. Okay. All right. Everything else in article fifth look good?
Yep.
And we'll make that change to article six, taking out the and and putting in the comma. The next one where we had a change was article twelve. And actually, did anything change here, Kevin? I know we had looked at this before.
No, so this was distributed to you in the last version, but I, I kept it redlined because we hadn't had a meeting between the last version and the second version I sent. So I just wanted to make sure language is adequate. I did have a conversation with Mr. Gant, um, briefly mentioned changing the wording in the last sentence of the, of the third, third section, where it reads compensation for school and municipal employees separated from the town's employment instead of or.
Okay. That sounds fine. Okay with everyone?
Yeah.
All right. The next edit that was made in here, uh, was just adding the word one. So it would say end consent agenda one because now we have two consent agendas.
Yep. That's all. That's good.
All right. The next one where we had a change.
I'm going to add a change in fourteen, which is the next one down since we're right there.
What would you like to?
In the town hall generator, it actually never says in the warrant or in the recommendation what this generator is for. So in the warrant part, the end of the second line after generator, add the words for the town hall building, comma, including design and do likewise in the recommendation.
This is in the recommendation and the first paragraph?
It's in the warrant part and then in the recommendation also.
Okay. To install a generator.
For the town hall building. Comma.
And it's in both paragraphs. Okay. A generator. Got that, Kevin?
Got it.
Okay. Super. Okay. The next one that had a change was twenty-fifth, the copper mine. And this, Kevin, I guess there were two options that came from KP relative to wording to refer to the fact that we're going to first try to get state funds.
Yes. So this one's a little of a, an interesting one. So I, I, there's two ways to approach it. The first one at the top. Well, let me back up. Um, at the FinCom meeting, there was a request for the recommendation for us to do some research, confirm and then incorporate if appropriate language that basically says that the funding for free cash for the forty-five thousand will be available for the cost of the road if the state earmark that we've talked about before doesn't come through. So sort of a backup to what we're trying to accomplish through the state funding. Um, talked with, uh, council, council said, um, it is, we can incorporate some language that, the first option, I actually made the change from the councils, uh, the language it said, they put by town meeting. So it said, should the state not allot the town a grant or otherwise make funds available the, um, to the town for the stated purpose? And what we had originally was by the time of town meeting, we're not going to have that money guaranteed to us until at least July, if not later. So that language I changed to fiscal twenty-two. I did ask if we could put fiscal twenty-two, so sort of in the year of fiscal twenty-two gives us some flexibility. Um, the response was we need to have a, a firm date on that. It can't be open ended. I haven't had a chance to go back and say, well, fiscal twenty-two does have a firm last.
Isn't it June thirtieth?
But you just put in that date.
I, absolutely. I think that might, um, might be the option. I, so that last little piece, if that's the option, we decide we'd like to, to recommend to the FinCom for their recommendation, or we can leave both in for them to look at Monday. It's their recommendation at the end of the day. I can make that.
Uh, I, I was just going to ask if we put, well, regardless of whether or not we put the date in there, doesn't this language basically preclude us from doing anything for at least a year? Because we will basically have to wait until the very last day of fiscal twenty-two, also known as June thirtieth, before we could expend any money.
Well, in, in theory, the state would have its budget done.
I understand that.
Twenty-two on, on a before July thirty-first of twenty twenty-one.
I understand that part, but don't we, yeah, I mean, I think we'll know, right? We'll know one way or another fairly.
Much sooner.
But if there is a date in there, Oregon fiscal twenty-two, it's one and the same. So that, that part doesn't really matter. But I mean, if I'm somebody who, uh, play my own devil's advocate because I'm clearly.
You're right. I, I agree with you, Marshall.
Yeah. I mean, because I could basically say, hold on, you don't know. Maybe they'll, you know, be a new law that says we're going to hand out money for roads. You can't do anything until fiscal twenty-two is over based on what we voted on at town meeting.
When should we know, Kevin? When will we get an answer from the state? What's realistic?
The governor should sign by July one. It's, last year went to August. Some, sometimes it could flex a little bit further out if necessary. We really should know by July though definitively, and then the money will be appropriated within a timeframe. We'll try to expedite as best we can, but sometimes they were at the mercy of, of the state and their different departments. Um, we think we might be able to have money in hands by, um, by, call it mid, mid fall, maybe early, maybe late fall. In which case we'll, as soon as that money's in hand, we would prioritize this to be paved if we can still do it within the season.
How late in the season can, um, Gary actually pave?
Depends, but it depends on the weather forecast and how late the, um, the plant's open till, um, some, some years if we have a mild early winter, we can go into December. Um, some years they might want to close it down prior. So, um.
So I, almost always through October or November.
So my question would be this, because I think, I mean, again, we're going to know within, let's call it six weeks, two months after this vote, whether or not this money came through. But the way I read this wording now, we would then sit paralyzed until a year from them because we would have to wait until the last day of fiscal twenty-two before we can say with one hundred percent surety that we didn't get money from the state. So is there a way to phrase this? And I am clearly no lawyer. Is there a way to phrase this that rather than tie it to the entire fiscal year, we tie it to the fiscal year budget or something like that? Because that's what we know one way or another in July or August, right?
Or just by a date, you could put by September first, twenty twenty-one, because we'll absolutely know from the state by that point in time, and it still gives us time for Gary to pave. So it doesn't.
That makes sense too. Yeah.
Maybe I'd go.
September first, twenty twenty-one.
Thinking maybe if you do October one, because we could probably still go into October. Mr. Jackson, do you agree? Usually the plants are open through November.
Uh, yeah, I, I normally, uh, we pave through, we, normally the plants are open through October and probably in the November.
But I mean, is there any scenario where we get this money from some other avenue other than the budget?
Other than the earmark you're saying from the state?
Yeah. I'm, I'm saying, why wait till October if we know one way or another, once the, you know, the, the budget process goes through, we'll know, right? There's not some other magical bucket that this comes from, from the state or is there? I would love it if there were.
So the, the, the sort of the catch twenty-two, so state, say it plays out, state sign, the governor signs it in August. Um, it's a little delayed for one reason or another. Then we, you know, we've got an earmark in the state budget this year that we, we, we just literally got the money wired to us last week for thirty thousand dollars. If there's delays in actually providing those funds to us and we, we're granted those funds, but we don't have them in hand based on this language, because it says funds available to the town.
Yeah.
They're obviously not available yet, even though they've committed to it.
So we're playing with the date in the other direction in that case.
Exactly. Gives us some flexibility. So if we see it come in, then if the state drags a feet and Coppermine neighbors are saying, you know,
This was voted through. It's time to do it.
Because I hate to have the money and then for some reason not out of our, out of our control at the state level, it's delayed, but we know it's coming.
Yep.
That we're forced to then use our funds, even though the money's.
December, you want October, Kevin? Is that what you're suggesting?
I had originally wrote December thirty-first. I mean, that's, that's assuming because if, if we get the thirty-five, uh, the forty-five thousand in the earmark and we get it late, late, late. I mean, I, the road's patched. I mean, they, we, we go early spring and it's not a fault of the town that we were delayed. We got the earmark. It's just the state department couldn't get it to us in time. I hate to have the language bind us to now using our local funds, our local free cash when we have this money over here that's available to us that we'd have to not take advantage of. So.
Can you use the free cash and then put and replenish with the state funds?
No, that's, that's dangerous. The state might give us a hard, it could give us a hard time on that, I think.
I mean, I, I.
Not reimbursable.
I, I guess I would be comfortable with that because in that scenario that you're talking about, that it would be delayed, I would hope that the residents would understand, we have the money. It's there. There, there, this is not a bait and switch where we're now not going to do it. The check has been approved. We just don't have it in our bank yet. I'm going to guess that they would be understanding. I would hope they would be understanding of that.
Kevin, did you say we just got funds, um, in, in March from the state? So December might not even work either.
Part of the reason I put fiscal twenty-two in there at the end of the fiscal, but I know that, that, that could be, that could tie our hands if we get denied them.
Yeah. And that's the, that's the flip side that I'm worried about where we get denied it. But I'm now in the shoes of somebody who never wanted the town to pay this money and it got approved, even though I voted against it. Well, now I'm going to rise up and say, hold on a second. You can't go spending that money right now because who knows what may happen before the end of fiscal twenty-two.
We could do something like March first, because that would be in time for us to prepare, um, you know, for. you know, for the spring, because if you find out in December, there's no paving until when, Boyd? If we find out in December, when can you start paving again?
Uh, probably in March, but certainly in April. But, 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 but bear in mind, if, if we, we know that that road is okay to last through the summer and the winter coming up. We know that we can, we know that that road is good enough to last that length of time. And if, and if we have a problem, Gary will go over and fix it. So I, I don't want to, I don't want to get you all bound up by a particular date. Make sure to put a date in there, something you can live with, and go from there.
That's right, I think going out to March would be good, because it, it doesn't matter if it's December or March, we still can't pave until April. And yet, to Marshall's point, we don't have to sit there and wait until June 30th to make sure no funds come through before we spend our own. So it does allow us to pave in the spring.
I, I think that's reasonable. Bear in mind, I, I was under the impression that what the FinCom was looking for was for us to try to avoid using free cash now or free cash next year.
Oh yeah, I think that this language will, is exactly what the FinCom is looking for. I'm just, I, I'm, I'm, I've in fact moved beyond that. I'm just trying to think, figure about the, the practicality of, you know, the one scenario where we do get the money from the state or the other scenario where we don't, and what that means to when we actually are able to do the work on the, on the road.
The good news about the, this, if they accepted the recommendation by the FinCom and it goes to town meeting, is town meeting votes in the affirmative, they agree with it. The neighbors, they're going to get their road paved one way or the other. Whether it's July of '22, or if it's, if it would say that language, or if it's, you know, September of this year, because the state earmark comes through. They have it and they have it, it's there, they've got what they know. And I think if, if there's enough impatience that a month or two, you know, that, that's, in my humble opinion.
Yeah, that's what I was saying before, that I hope they would understand. So maybe, maybe this, maybe this entire conversation has been for naught and the existing language is fine, because the worst case scenario is it gets approved and they have to wait a year and we're going to patch it in the meanwhile. But they know that it's coming, because it's been approved.
Boyd, is there any benefit, um, cost wise or scheduling to say something can't happen until July? Would you like the flexibility of having April, May, June?
Well, remember that Gary pointed out the other day, the other night, that the $45,000 is based on current pricing of, of material and, and if, if we go through another winter, God knows, God knows what it'll be next year.
Which in fact was my confusion at FinCom. I'm sorry, that was my confusion at FinCom when I said it was going to be done before the end of the fiscal year, because that number, but I wasn't going to get into this whole hornet's nest, that that number may not even be the right number anymore.
If prices go up, they're going to be up, whether it's in April, May, June, or July, because we would be in the new contract, so it, it doesn't matter. We'll sign the new contract and prices are what they are. I, I just didn't know, Boyd, with your experience, if you'd say, Boyd, not be able to do April, May, and June really handcuffs you because, you know. But if there's no reason, then it doesn't really make a difference.
I don't think so, I don't think so.
Okay.
So what are we saying? Put a date in it instead of.
I was gonna say, I think after all of that, we're not making any changes.
Well, we are putting in a date, not fiscal year '22.
Yes, but that date is, is effectively the same thing, June 30th.
It's going to be June 30th?
Yep.
Well, and now we have to choose whether we go with that phrase or we use the ending phrase after all that. We choose one or the other, not both blue sections.
So as I read through them, as, as we talk through it, there's, there's kind of some finesse in how the options play out. First one sort of starts by saying, this is the backup plan. You know, the $45,000 free cash is the backup plan. We're, we're relying on the state. If it doesn't come through from this. The other one sort of says, we're putting $45,000. However, if we find our, find ourselves in the opportunity to have a grant along the way, we'll take advantage of that, which is kind of always the case. For example, the phones this past year, when we had the earmark, or the warrant article for $30,000 and we used CARES funds to cover that cost. So it kind of just puts it in writing what we do in practice.
I, I definitely like the first one, because the second one looks like a bunch of word salad.
Yeah, I don't think it does clear, right, Marshall?
Um, the first one tells you exactly what it is. And by the way, I think we should put some version of the first one into the description at the bottom as well. So it's clear that people are voting to spend town money only in the event that the state doesn't fund it first.
I like that too. I put expand description, because I think that is what makes it most clear to people. They might read the motion, but I think the italics puts it in layman's terms.
Yeah, Kevin, I think you, I think Marshall hit their nail on the head. We don't want to spend town money unless we don't get the state funds.
So is anyone more comfortable with item one or version one?
Option one.
Option one?
Yep.
Okay, and then Kevin, do you want to take a stab at the expanded description?
Sure, no problem.
Okay, anything else on 25?
I hope not.
I'd like to go back real quick to, I think it was 620. Uh, in, in 20, just a typo thing. In the warrant, at the, the last line of the warrant ends with related expense, semicolon.
Expenses.
It should be expenses, comma, and take out a semicolon.
Okay, I'm ready for 26, the ambulance stabilization fund. Any questions or changes to the edits that Kevin made?
Did we get the word other in the, yeah, and other?
Not in this version, no.
So, okay, good.
We were, it was a conversation where Mr. Gannett, it pointed out, and the third line of the first paragraph, the second red section says fire apparatus. And the request was to add the word other related to capital. And the same goes for the then recommendation.
But it was in the recommendation always. It was always in the recommendation, I think, right? Wasn't it? Maybe not.
No, it's, it's not.
Okay. Right, put other in both cases.
I agree.
Okay, any other changes to that one? Okay, moving on, the, the next small edit was the section that says consent agenda two. Just wording, adding the word two for articles 27 through 30. That's good.
Yep.
Moving on.
So on 28, okay, are you up to 28?
Uh, yep, we go to 28.
Okay. So I understand the mechanics of what's happened here. Because they've broken it up, I think it makes it more difficult. But this particular 28, I think, is going to be very confusing to people in the second part, where the wording is and replacing it with the following. I, I'm going to suggest we change the wording to this and inserting the following in section Roman numeral I. Because it's, it's what we're doing. It, it doesn't create the problem of replacing C with B. And I understand why it's not C, but you could try to explain why it's not C, because you, at the top of that, it should say by striking C. You're really not striking C, you're striking B if you approve the previous article. So, I mean, it, it, Masco wasn't going to listen to any, anything in this case. So, but I think if we simply change that wording, it'll be a little bit more of, a little bit clearer to residents that we're not trying to replace C with B.
And what was your wording, Dick?
And inserting the following in section Roman numeral I, colon.
And those are our words, so it doesn't make a difference to check with the school about the other two towns?
Right.
You comfortable with that, Kevin? Everybody okay?
Yep. Uh, just to clarify, you're, you're working on inserting section B, is that right?
The one that says B, it's B that we're inserting, correct?
Yeah, yeah, got it, got it.
Okay, all right. The next edit that I see is just the, the wording that says end consent agenda two.
Yep.
And then for the next article, I had a suggestion on 33.
How about 31, how about 31, real quick? 31 and 32 have both the same issue, just for consistency. At the end of the warrant, in each case, it's or take any other action relative thereto. Somehow we dropped the other in these cases.
Well, in 33, there's no other.
That, that's a, oh, there is none? That's a mistake, and I missed that one, I'm sorry.
Just to make it consistent.
31 and 32, it needs it, and then thank you for catching it in that one. Wow, how do we, oh, no, no, it's, it's there, in 33?
Um, oh, you're right, sorry.
Any other.
Actually, that line is the one where I thought, like, a small change. I would pull it up into that sentence. I don't know why, or take any other action is hanging out by itself.
Yes, it's, we already talked, yes. That's, and that's, that's the change in 33rd is to bring it up.
33rd to bring it up, yeah.
Or take any other action.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay.
You follow on this, Kevin? Follow on.
Hey, let's see.
We're moving pretty fast here.
Uh, in article 40th, the only thing I would say is we have a sum in there of $272,000 for free cash, and I don't know that we know the exact dollar amount yet from FinCom. Should that just be blank and in yellow?
Sure, I can yellow it.
Because that's not the right amount, right? It's going to be more than that.
Uh, yes, it likely will be.
Okay.
I, I'd like to go back to 30, 32, we, we moved on to 33 there with that other.
Well, were there any things marked in 32?
In 32, I have another change in 32 in the explanation.
Okay.
The, the way the explanation, second sentence starts under MGL 30B, contracts in excess of three years. So what's really happening is town meeting is not approving a contract. What town meeting is doing is approving authority to enter into a contract in excess of three years. So that's the wording that I would put in there after 30B, comma, authority to enter into a contract in excess, those words. Authority to enter into a contract.
Okay, so there are no other identified changes. Is there anything else that anyone has for anything, any other article that already doesn't have edits in it for this version?
I'm sorry, and it, because, because we took out multiple contracts, it is require, requires. Three years requires the approval of town meeting. And that actually is true, I'm sorry. It's, that case is true in, in both 31 and 32, that wording.
Yep.
Okay. You got the plural on requires, I had missed that before.
Total read. 30B, comma, authority to enter into a contract in excess of three years requires the approval of town meeting.
Requires the, yeah, I missed the requires, I'm sorry about that. So it's in both 31 and 32, yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, any other suggestions or edits, comments?
I don't think so.
We're close.
We are, very close. So, Dick, anything?
No. Nope.
Okay, so then we could, other than article 25, which Kevin is coming up with verbiage, expanded verbiage in the italic description. Everything else, we have before us the exact wording with the edits that we talked about today. Could we vote on articles 1 through 24 and 26 through 40 and just wait for Kevin to come back with the verbiage to approve article 25th? Or are you comfortable to approve them all even before seeing his verbiage?
Yeah, I mean, I think the only, I am, because I think the only verbiage we're talking about is the description. And I think we all agree that basically we're going to come up with a sentence that says, we're going to approve this in the event that the state doesn't pay for it. Like, I can trust that we can come up with that sentence non, non controversially.
We're going out on a limb there, Marshall.
I know, I know, it's, it's dicey to trust Kevin to come up with a single sentence at this point, but I'm willing to put my, my faith behind him.
Okay, Boyd, are you comfortable to vote on all 40? Without seeing Kevin's sentence? Uh, you're on mute.
I'm going to say that that's a yes, that looks like a positive.
You're on mute, Boyd.
If he doesn't, if he doesn't get it right, we'll cut his ears off.
All right, there you go. That could, that could be in the motion.
Do you want to write it?
Okay, Dick, are you comfortable moving forward with the motion?
Uh, then there are two articles that I would vote not to put in the warrant. And those two are the creation of the ambulance stabilization fund as it's written and the transfer of the highway garage as it's written. I, I do not agree with those. I think you know that I don't agree with those.
Do you have the numbers?
The other ones, I would go with the other ones, except we should hold off on the copper mine one until the wording is done on that. Oh, excuse me, yeah, yeah, copper mine until the wording is done on that.
Well, we did do the, the wording of copper mine, we just did the edit.
Happy with it finally, okay.
Yeah, instead of FY '22, it'll say an actual date. And we'll take out the second option.
That's agreed to then, yeah, then I'm all right, I'm all right with copper mine.
Okay, so Dick, do you have, let's see, article 26 is the ambulance, ambulance, and the highway garage, what number is that you have?
Um, I had 35, I think it's 36 now.
I gotta go, I gotta go look.
36.
Okay, so 26 is the ambulance and 36 is the highway. So let's vote on the others and then we'll take those two individually, because there'll be disagreement on the vote. Okay, so do I have a motion to accept articles 1 through 25?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Um, I'll give the, I'll give the motion, Marshall allows second.
Okay, any further discussion? And we'll move to roll call, Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez, aye. So the motion passes unanimously. Then we will go to article 26. Could I have a motion, please, to accept this article? This is the creation of the ambulance?
Yeah, so moved.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Then we'll go for a roll call, Mr. Hook.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Nay.
And Ms. Bermudez?
Because of the, because of the form of the, the nature of the funding.
Okay, so noted, and Ms. Bermudez is aye. So the motion passes three to one. Okay, then we'll go on to article 27 through 35. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call, Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez, aye, it passes unanimously. Can I have a motion to approve articles 36?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? We'll go roll call, Mr. Hook. We'll go roll call, Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Nay.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Bermudez, aye, it passes three to one. Thank you, and then Article thirty-seventh through Article forty, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved.
And a second? I think you both went for the first motion, so.
You know what, I'll give this one to Boyd then, and I'll provide the second. I thought we were into a rhythm, I thought we were into a routine.
It might be if we just do it the same every time.
Seeing Deb's awake, hello, okay, um, any further discussion?
Keeps Debbie on her toes.
Seeing none, we'll go roll call, Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez, aye, it passes unanimously, all right, thank you, yay, we're done. So the only thing you have to come back with then, Kevin, incorporating the edits, uh, is your sentence, and we eagerly await.
It'll be the next version that comes out, um, Ben, do we want to, um, take up the, uh, the STM?
Yep, we'll go to that one next now, all right, so everybody received a copy, and, um, I gave my one, one edit to, uh, Kevin. Um, the only thing I noted is the time should be ten-thirty versus ten.
Thank you, and, and, yeah, and the other simple one was that, uh, a colon after fourth, Article fourth. But I didn't text the most important one, which is just change in time.
Um, can I ask you, Kevin, um, is the, the reason why we need additional money in the peg and cable fund?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I, yeah, I had some little changes here too, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so our, our peg account, um, we had an additional charge, it was like thirty-two-hundred dollars, um, that came in that we're responsible for, it's historically, I believe previously was booked into a town hall expense, um, but we booked it this year into, um, the peg account, Debbie's looking at it, I don't know if Debbie, you have any insight on that beyond what I said, that's my understanding, or it might have been a new charge that we received for it.
It, it was a new charge that we've never had before, apparently, when we came into the new building, um, Boxford Cable, actually, it kind of rolled into their bill, they took care of it, but now it's kind of separated out, it's its own bill, it's, the company is Cactus, C-A, C-A-S-T-U-S, and it's like the thirty-two-hundred dollar invoice that we're gonna be getting annually.
So knowing that, is that incorporated into our, uh, budget for the following year, is that an ongoing?
Yes, so we did incorporate this time, and it was, um, it was, I did check the contract with Boxford Cable, it explicitly does call for that as an additional expense for the towns to incur, and that, so that it is accurately, accurate that we, we have to incur that charge.
Okay, Mr. Gant, did you have other changes?
Yes, Lynn, um, in the recommendation, I, I would have the second line, it starts out with cable-related fund, to read cable-related fund to the peg and cable professional services account. So those two words adding in there, the peg, the peg and cable professional services account.
Did you also, Mr. Gant, want a comma after the word?
Okay, and you mean at the, in the description there, yes, and in the description, it has, uh, the words Boxford Cable Television. I was wondering if it would be all right if everybody, if we changed that to B-C-A-T, small V, that's kind of like their logo. I think for somebody who doesn't really know the town that well, or what we're doing, having us pay money to Boxford Cable Television might be very confusing, but B-C-A-TV is what, maybe you see that on the website and a couple of other places, it's, it really is a separate company, it's hard to make.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, it's, it's probably a proper name, and I'll bet you Boxford Cable Television is not.
Okay, so we agree, B-C-A-T, small V, thank you, that's it.
Isn't it small A, B-C-A, small A-TV?
I think it's capital.
It's capitalized. For B-C-A-T and a small V.
Okay.
That's the way.
Have you been under a rock, Marshall?
Well, I mean, I, I'm just thinking about the, the English language where the A should be small, but, you know, clearly, I just looked and you, you all are correct, so.
Live under a rock, wow, she's tough.
Listen, do I have to go get my toppy, because, because I'll bring, I'll wait that in front of all of y'all.
We bow to the toppy, um, okay, any other, um, changes?
That's all that I had.
That's it.
Okay, um, so we'll need a motion to approve this warrant, the, the special time meeting warrant as written?
I'm gonna let Boyd do that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
So, so we're, we're voting on all, to have all four of these warrant articles in the warrant?
Yes, as, as written and edited, yeah, okay, um, roll call, Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez is aye, it passes unanimously, thank you, um, Kevin, do we have Steve Wayland's letter yet, is that?
Not yet, no. And I know that FinCom's working on their letter as well.
Great, okay, um, I think that takes care of it for the warrant, any other items, Kevin, related to the warrant that you want to?
Yeah, the other things I would just mention still to come, um, obviously, we're gonna in, include the, um, the, the yellow for the final budget numbers, which we'll hear on Monday when we have the FinCom meeting, where we land there. There is some consideration on some of the recommendation language that we have, um, for the two planning, um, the garage disposition article and the codification, they discuss possibly putting in language that's recommended pending further review, or some language to that effect, in lieu of the existing language, depend purely based on timing, um, of when they, their meeting on Monday, planning board's meeting on Tuesday, so, they, they're gonna approve their articles on Tuesday, and they might not be able to obviously vote on those, um, on Monday if they're not approved yet, so, um, that's a possibility, I just want to make you aware as well, and then, um, once we have that final budget on Monday, not only will we insert the yellow, but we'll put the attachment A together as well, um, as part of the package, which will have the budget breakdown, and, uh, that, that should be.
Kevin, did they talk at all, I know there was some initial discussion, but I don't know where it went, if they would possibly be meeting after the public hearing to do a final vote?
I, I, we, we had the meeting late, went pretty late Monday night, and, um, I did ask for that consideration to maybe have a final meeting to meet just on those articles for a vote in rec, hopefully with a recommendation and the affirmative. Um, they sort of left it open-ended, they'll probably discuss it on Monday, so, whether or not they want to meet one final time.
Okay, and then the, the last thing was, uh, was there any discussion with them about the meeting before the annual town meeting? You know, doing it maybe that Thursday night, similar to what we did last year?
Uh, have not had the discussion, I have, again, um, Shay and I have exchanged, exchanged voice messages to each other, and have not had a chance to connect before tonight's meeting to discuss that yet, but, um, it is on my list to, to, to have that discussion as well.
Did anybody have any preference doing it right before the ten o'clock meeting on Saturday, or doing it Thursday night via Zoom? That seemed to work well last year.
Yeah.
Oh, good, I mean, either way.
Either way.
Okay, great, um, I know we have some meeting dates to discuss, Kevin, because of Patriots Day.
Yes, so we're.
By the way, one question, one question about the warrant, when does this thing have to go to print?
We will be going to print on Friday, the second, not this week, next week, the second, um, so.
God, you gave me, you gave me a heart attack.
Second, so, yeah, so we're, we'll be in good shape, we'll have the FinCom on Monday.
Yeah.
Um, it's like, um, planning on Tuesday, and then Wednesday, um, I'll be just pumping in those final numbers, getting the attachment, uh, A with the budget information, pull the package together, and then.
And the two letters?
The two, well, yep, the letters, we'll have the whole package pulled together on those last couple days, so next week, middle of the week, we'll be a little busy, but we'll get that all put together, and then we'll go on Friday. We have a little extra time now that we pushed our meeting out till Saturday from Tuesday, so, if some, if the building catches on fire or something crazy happens, you know, we'll be, we'll, we've got a built-in few days, we're not gonna look for them, but if they're there in the event of an absolute catastrophic emergency.
Yeah, great, great job.
We're working on, on A, of course, attachment A, we can't do it yet, all the stuff is pretty much done, but you have to have the numbers approved by the FinCom officially, but the, the layout of it had been discussed last year, I think, and before. Uh, the idea of putting in a percent column, where we hadn't had it in the past, to show the percent difference from one year to the next for a particular department, I'm not sure that it makes as much difference, it doesn't make much difference, helpful this year, in the case of highway and park and cemetery, but, uh, I, I think, it still stands that that's a good suggestion to put the percent in, so people can very quickly go down through that and look at the column and see what percent differences were for different departments, different, the things that they're voting on.
Uh, due to the lateness of the date and the need to go to print, uh, would you agree to, uh, would you agree that we could all agree to do it for next year's warrant rather than this year's?
Well, it's, it's in a, uh, a spreadsheet as it is, I mean, that's what you, that's how you produce it, is from a.
Yeah.
So the column is, you know, there's no extra work, it's a matter of adding the column in there and putting the column at the top. If, if, if it's more work, I'm, I'm, well, I'm, I am not sure.
Well, yeah.
It's no more, it's just this, yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead, Kevin.
One thing, I, 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 I think it's, it's, it's certainly a, a good idea, an interesting idea, the only, only hedge I have, um, in doing so would be, some of the percentages might be very misleading without an explanation of why they're going up or down for that matter.
Because of the reorg?
Reorg, but, you know, the, the unemployment's coming out, that's gonna be a, you know, a significant drop, there's, there's other places as well where, you know, we've cut something from a thousand dollars to five hundred dollars, um, where the percentage might be a little misleading without an explanation. Um, and I, I'd feel more comfortable having an explanation of company, any type of percentage that might swing more than a few percentage points, and that would, might be, from a timing standpoint, that component of it might be a little bit of a, of a, to get it right, uh, might be something, uh, concerning at, at this point in the, uh, process. But that, that's just my thought on my end.
I think particularly when you think about, like, a lot of the stuff Chief Hovey did, where he took, you know, three things and turned it into one, you're gonna see a percentage increase of like, you know, four hundred percent that isn't necessarily on this document linked to all the places that went down dramatically, or, in his case, disappeared altogether. And so if it's disappearing, if a line item has disappeared altogether, then you're not gonna have a percentage decrease to offset that, you know, theoretically enormous percentage increase somewhere else.
Yeah, I think we've, we've made so many changes this year, even minor, to clean things up, and as Marshall just said, with Chief coming in, and now this is his budget, this is the first year, I would hate to cause a lot of confusion with people, seeing that it's a balanced budget, that we've done a great job in, um, making sure it's as tight and conservative as possible. I'd hate to introduce a lot of questions, um, I think next year, when the dust has settled, it will be Chief's budget, and there won't be a lot of shifting, the three departments will be established. Um, and because we are, as Boyd said, a week from when all of this needs to be done, even though it's just a percentage, you know, there are calculations that have to go in there, and the explanations Kevin said, I just think it's a lot to try to pull off quickly. And it would be misleading.
And I think if, um, you know, there's, there's obviously the, the attachment summary of, of the budget, um, it's, it's not a detailed version, the, um, the, you know, we can certainly push people to the online omnibus, the final version, that'll be distributed, um, once we get through Monday night's meeting through Catherine, um, and really celebrate and push people to the, that location for, um, information on that as well, it, just a thought, just so if there is people who want to kind of get into the weeds, there's a, or into the detail, I should say, not the weeds, but into the detail, there, there is certainly, uh, publicly available, uh, details for people as well.
Okay, is there anything else before we move on to meeting dates? Okay, um, Kevin, if you want to share the issue of Patriots Day that popped up that we need to address?
So we have a meeting scheduled on the nineteenth, which is Patriots Day, that Monday, um, what, um, have to move that meeting, obviously, um, because it falls in a holiday, recognized holiday here in Massachusetts, and, um, as such, we could push it to the following Monday, um, that'll be the week, that'll be two weeks out from town meeting, not sure what our agenda's gonna look like right now, there's nothing yet on the, on the horizon that we have, um, for that meeting, um, but that's certainly an option if, if we wanted to move it, um. I don't know, Debbie, you, you, you and I talked a little bit, I don't know if you want to add anything to, to the conversation on that front.
Um, I know Lynn and I talked before the meeting as well, just kind of running some scenarios, I mean, you, you have this week's meeting, you could always do not have a meeting next week and do the twelfth and the twenty-sixth, and that would avoid the holiday as well. Um, that would change all the meetings, though, within the month, or you could simply push it out, you know, the nineteenth to the twenty-sixth, if you want to just push that out a week, but then you're gonna have back-to-back meetings again, um, after that.
Kevin, could you speak to the agenda, like, we've got a meeting now coming up, March twenty-ninth, April fifth is the following Monday. Is that going to be much on the agenda for that April fifth meeting?
Not yet. Um, there's nothing urgent that's, that we, or that we can forecast in the pipeline that is gonna come up, um, on that fifth as of right now, that will be time-sensitive, something always could come up, um, we do have that work session if, in the event something time-sensitive would come up, that we could leverage as well if we needed to, um, but yeah, right now.
Which was the work session? Which was the work session?
The fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Fifteen.
Any preference?
I mean, if we have a work session on the fifteenth, and I don't know that we need to meet four days later, I mean, obviously, we can't meet four days later, but you know what I mean? I don't think that there would be a problem just taking that one meeting and moving it to the twenty-sixth, though I had looked forward to joining you from a beach on the nineteenth, now I, I will have to.
Now you don't get the gloat at the meeting?
You could still blue-screen it.
That's true, I mean, Dick's got a background, we have no idea where Dick is in any given meeting, he could be on the beach every time we do this.
Look at that smile, he's someplace.
I am someplace.
I meant someplace interesting.
The Gant Lair, we don't know where it is.
He has been known to go to the Virgin Islands.
Yeah.
So if, if, so it's the, the options I think are, would be, we cancel the fifth, we maintain, we end, um, move to the twelfth.
Twelfth and twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth, maintaining the.
Yep, well, there goes Kevin.
Yep, ready, ready to go.
I don't know, but, uh, I think what he was saying is we cancel the fifth and go to the twelfth and twenty-sixth is our Monday meetings in April, and if we have a back-to-back into May, then that's fine, we can address that then.
Do you guys want to move?
From Debbie here.
I'm sorry, um, if you move it to the twelfth and the twenty-sixth, do you want to move the work session to the twenty-second?
Yeah.
So you would be essentially moving everything down.
Yes.
And then I'm back on the beach again, so, there you go.
There you go. All right, so it's kind of what we thought, Deb.
And that, and it's, it's easy, I, I, like, I, well, happen, I was on the website, it will, it will just say, um, the original dates will be canceled, and then the other ones will pop in the schedule, so, it's, it's fine.
So for April, then, we'll do the twelfth, the twenty-second, and the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Yep.
Sound good?
Sounds good.
Next meeting is four days from now.
The twenty-ninth, right, now here comes Kevin.
Okay.
Uh, the one thing I'm gonna.
We're all set.
Yeah, yeah, everything's done now, Kevin, uh, the one thing I'm gonna say for anyone who, um, cares, uh, we have scheduled a cable advisory meeting with Kevin on Monday at five o'clock before our normal meeting. It's basically so Bill and Kevin can really get on the same page in terms of what exactly we're looking for from the cable company, and I know that Bill is keenly interested to hear if any of us have anything, now I'm clearly at every meeting, so he's heard everything he needs to hear from me, but if any other select board members have any particular something that they're looking for out of that cable contract, then, uh, Monday at five o'clock would be when to join and.
Is it five-thirty?
Marshall, it's five-thirty, it should be posted on the website now.
All right, five-thirty, does that mean we only have a half an hour, or we still have an hour?
He, he's, an hour, five-thirty to six-thirty, or, you can actually go to seven.
Okay. In my head, it was five o'clock, but regardless, five-thirty.
It was April meeting.
That's what Bill gave me.
Okay.
The April meeting dates again, please, twelve?
April meeting would be the twelfth, the work session would be the twenty-second, and the last meeting is on the twenty-sixth.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, um, Kevin, is there anything else? You'd like to share?
No, that, just big thank you. No, just big thank you, we've come so far, and we, just clarification, are we planning a work session on the first, or are we in a good place, do we?
Do we need to get together, is there anything that's going to come out of the FinCom meeting that would require us to meet?
I think it's going to, unless they, unless there's a, something significant that they change, but I can't see that, I think we're in a very good place in understanding where we are budgetarily and the mechanism of.
It is probably a good idea, though, for safety, to have that Wednesday at four o'clock and cancel the meeting when we don't need it, it'd be better to schedule it now.
Thursday the first, you mean?
What's that?
Thursday?
I said, I said Wednesday the thirty-first, right, of March, thirty-first of March. You can do it Thursday.
Well, no, I thought Kevin, Kevin said April first, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
From, just big inconsistency-wise, and if there is.
Okay, great.
I mean, yeah, we can keep it on there, and if FinCom surprises us, then we do it, and if not, we just cancel.
Hopefully, it's canceled, but we have it in place, and the reason I would say in place is because we're ready to go to press, and there's sometimes less than a things that we have to, something happens.
And that's four o'clock?
Yes.
Same time?
Is that okay with you, Debbie, can you get that? All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
A lot easier to cancel one than to reschedule.
And, yep.
Yeah, and that's, in case you really hate my last sentence, I put in that.
Yes, this one sentence, everything hinges on this one.
We're just going to bring you to the woodshed on that one sentence on Thursday. Okay, then, let's have our final motion.
Oh, yeah.
Who, who? Bueller, Bueller? So moved by Boyd.
Boyd and I both moved to adjourn, but I will second Boyd's motion.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez is aye, the motion passes unanimously, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, good night.
Good night, all, good job.